A few minutes late, but thank you for your patience. For the record, it is Tuesday, December 10th. It's five minutes after six. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Borden.
Here.
Mayor DeVeern.
Here.
Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight will be led in the community invocation by Ed Mechtel. Also with Calvary Chapel here in Meridian. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you, Ed, for joining us.
Thank you for having me. It's a privilege and an honor. You guys would pray with me. Lord God, we just thank you so much for each one in the room tonight, Lord. We know that you've created each one and, Lord, that you have them on a mission that you see fit for each one. So, Lord, we lift the city council members to you this morning and those others that are here. And pray that you'd give wisdom and discernment and the ability to understand and project the decision that's the best for the city of Meridian. Lord, we lift Mayor Tammy to you this evening. Father, we thank you so much for her commitment to this city. And, Lord, it's almost heartbreaking that this is her last year, but we pray that you'd be with her and her family, Lord, that, you know, you would bless them and we lift them on high to you. Lord, we pray the transition to the new member or the new mayor would be smooth and it would be a great thing for the city of Meridian. Father, we pray for the blessings from you onto the city of Meridian and all that goes on here. We thank you so much for what you've done here, what you continue to do. And, Lord, for those that are in the position to make the city of Meridian what it is. And, Lord, we just pray that, you know, you would be present in each heart tonight, Lord, that you would help guide and direct this meeting tonight, Lord, and that each one would have joy here tonight in the decisions that they make and their call to do. Father, we thank you so much for your love, your mercy, and your grace. And, Lord, we pray that you would be with each one of us tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ed. We appreciate you kicking us off. Item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
There were no changes as published, so I move we adopt the agenda.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. And under announcements, Christmas in Meridian continues. We have Twilight Christmas Market that kicks off tomorrow from noon to seven here at City Hall. Also going on right now until, well, it's over. So, but we do have a new showing in Initial Point Gallery. And a number of artists have their talent hung up on the walls and it's a beautiful exhibit. As well, we have the 3D filled and that's very interesting as well. So, I'd invite you to go upstairs and take a look. Thursday, we have an employee open house from 3:30 to 5:00 and then the public from 5:30 to 7:30 to say their farewells. And then on Saturday, December 14th, from 10:00 to 3:00, at the Meridian Boys and Girls Club, we have the Children's Winterland Festival that the Parks Department does every year. If you haven't been, it's a great time for families and definitely our kids. And don't forget, the letters are still being taken in Santa's mailbox. And as long as the letters have a legible return address, they will receive a letter back before December 20th. And I think that goes to the 12th. Is that correct, Garrett? Okay. Is there anything else?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mylum.
So, you stole all my things, almost, on my list of announcements from the Parks Department. So, Santa's mailbox is until December 20th. And the Salvation Army Angel Tree still has some tags on it out there. And that is good through the 12th. So, gifts need to be brought back here by the 12th. Thank you for covering most of my stuff. I appreciate it.
You bet. And next Tuesday, between the work session and the regular section, we will have a reception for our outgoing city council members. So, encourage you all to come and join us. And if there's nothing further, we'll go ahead and move on to item six. For future meeting topics, Mr. Clerk, any signups?
Madam Mayor, there's one signup. Paul Orlando.
Okay. This section is an open public forum. We can't make any decisions, but we have three minutes. And Paul, would you like to come up and join us? Good evening. You'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Paul Orlando. I live at 4922 South Bitter Creek Avenue in Meridian. And my office is on Eagle Road in Meridian.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good luck, Mayor DeVeern. Miss you. Counsel, thank you for having me. I live in the Bitter Creek subdivision, just since I only have a few minutes to share. My subdivision 12 years ago had an arrangement where the city was going to provide us sewer. And a couple of years after that, when we moved in the subdivision, two years after the 12 years, they reaffirmed the agreement. A few years later, the city decided not to do sewer there. And we made a new agreement where the city would get us connected to Kuna at some point in the future. Several years have gone by. We still don't have sewer. We're using a microbial system in our subdivision. The city agreed to, the last two years, to provide us with inspections on our city sewer. And this last year, the company called Wastewater Management had a lot of problems that we found out and discovered this year. One, we had a break-in in one of the homes that the person was youth that came in and broke into somebody's homes. The police were called. In addition to that, four homes had wires cut on their microbial systems to bypass the alarms that are set up on them. And 20 out of 25 homes today have problems that are considered somewhat major, 2,000 to 3,000 or more, and damage that hasn't been done because we weren't notified that the systems needed maintenance on them or needed to be dumped as they were in the past. So, today, there's 20 homes that have substantial bills that are coming their way. And certainly, we feel because we haven't been provided sewer in the last 12 years and/or the folks that the city hired to do those repairs are failing and putting us in a bad situation, we ask that you guys do two things for us. One, continue to help us get sewer, because 12 years is a long time not to have it when we were intended to have it within a couple of years. But more importantly, help us take care of the systems that we have problems with now in our subdivision. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, I guess I'll ask our city attorney and our public works director if they'll look into this and get together with Mr. Orlando.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Okay. Item 7A is the third or second and third reading of ordinance 19-1856. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an ordinance adding Meridian City Code, Section 6-2-8D, regarding dogs off-leash in a public place, adopting a savings clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay. You've heard the reading of this ordinance. We've held several, a number of, public comments. Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number 19-1856 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve item 7A. Is there any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 7B is ordinance 19-1866. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an ordinance repealing and replacing Meridian City Code Title I, Chapter 9, Sections 1, 9.1 through 1, 9.3, regarding definitions, investments, and budget policy, and replacing with new Sections 1-9-1 through 1-9-3, regarding general provisions, authority, and responsibility, and policies, and providing an effective date.
Counsel, we did have our CFO send these out to you some time ago and was here last week to answer any questions. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this read in its entirety?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve ordinance number 19-1866 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve item 7B. If there is no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt. Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 8A is a public hearing for program year 2018 on the CDBG. And I will turn this over to Crystal. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you may recall, I was here a couple of weeks ago talking about the end-of-year report, which we refer to as the CAPER. So, I'm here tonight for the public hearing and also just to give everybody a brief reminder of what was in the CAPER. So, the first thing that we focused on were the goals. So, this year, we worked on improving accessibility, providing social services, admin and fair housing, and enhancing homeownership opportunities. As far as expenditures, we spent $342,000 in admin and fair housing, homebuyer's assistance, sidewalks, streetlights, and a picnic shelter, as well as extended care scholarships with the Boys and Girls Club and homelessness prevention through the Jesse Tree. Funds not spent by the end of the program year were around $367,000. Of these, the majority of it went into construction projects. The first one was the Carlton area sidewalks. Those are anticipated to be completed in the next week or so. The Chateau Chief Joseph Streetlights, Phase 1 of that was completed in November, as was the Crestwood Fenway Streetlights. And the Meridian Library Restrooms were completed in October. So, the majority of that has been spent at this point. Funds that we know need to be reallocated during this upcoming program year are for the homeownership program. There was some funds that they weren't able to find enough households for. And there's also some admin and fair housing costs that we didn't need. The focus of the CAPER is also on planning for the upcoming year. We try to look ahead to identify the most effective use of funding. One area that we really look at is affordable housing. To address this, we fund childcare through the Boys and Girls Club, extended care scholarships. We also offer homebuyer's assistance program. And for this coming year, we are working on a homeowner rehab program. I'm also working on a proposal for a formal work group that can address fair housing, or, I'm sorry, affordable housing in a more broad scope. There's a lot of collaboration involved so that we can try to keep our hand on the pulse of what's going on in the community. We work closely with Our Path Home, Behavioral Health Board, Meridian Anti-Drug Coalition, Housing and Homelessness Roundtable, Neighbors United, and Unity Through Inclusion, which it just got its official name last time we referred to it as the Diversity Work Group, but it's the same thing. So, there are not many updates. There were no changes to the content. I did forget to include the introduction last time. So, I added the introduction, which basically just talks about what the CAPER is and what the timeline is that we're reporting on. And the other update is to Attachment 1, public comment. There were no public comments, so I noted that in there. And I also, I included the legal notices from the Idaho Statesman at the Meridian Press Tribune and a screenshot of the website showing that we did put it out there for public comment. So, we are almost done with the CAPER. The final steps left tonight are the public hearing and closing the public comment. When that's closed, then I'll finalize the CAPER and submit a resolution next week. And as soon as that's approved, then I can submit it to HUD. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Crystal, I guess I just want to make a comment. I think this is the cleanest that this program has ever been. And I just want to thank you for all your efforts. This is so impressive to see how you've been able to wrestle this program, get it on a solid track forward, and just want to tell you how much we appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Counsel, any questions? Okay.
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cavanagh.
Crystal, would you mind just giving us a little bit more info on the diversity through inclusion?
Sure. We are, we're actually identified, the first strategy that we're working on right now, we're going to take the next several meetings. We're meeting once a month for two hours. And we are going to try to put together a little bit more data on what's going on in Meridian and see if there needs to be a community assessment or if we can pull together some data that's already out there from other assessments. And then we want to bring it to counsel and the mayor to let you know what's going on. And then, at that time, we'll be able to identify and ask whether it's looking into like a Human Rights Commission or something like that or whether it's just supporting us as moving forward with the city. So, I'm not really sure what the ask is going to be, but probably this summer, then we'll be doing that and presenting it to you guys.
Madam Mayor. Crystal, I just applaud you and it sounds like a committee's work on this. Something I've got a unique interest in and look forward to hearing from you this summer.
Very good. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone, Mr. Clerk, that has signed up to testify?
Madam Mayor, there is nobody signed in for this.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this item? Crystal, what are the next steps?
So, I will submit the resolution and the final CAPER on your consent agenda next week. And that's all you guys have left to do.
Okay. So, we'll close public comment tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I move that we close the public hearing for the program year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Performance and Evaluation Report CAPER.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. And this, you will see on the agenda next week. Thank you, Crystal. Nice job.
Thank you, Crystal. Good job.
Okay. Item 8B. This item cannot be heard. The applicant did fail to post the site as required. And so, unfortunately, we cannot. It looks like from the lack of people in the audience that Mr. Clerk must have done a good job in letting people know that, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We tried.
Any comment from staff on? No.
Madam Mayor, members of the council certainly had communications with the applicant last week. He did communicate to me that he did not post the site. Felt like there was an error on the city's part. And we've looked at the public record and that is not the case. The applicant just did not follow the statute and posted site with 10 days prior to the city council hearing. So, on Friday, late afternoon on Friday, I prepared a memo and asked for you to continue this this evening. I'm not sure on what date the council's pleasure, which date you'd like to have this placed on, but I know the 17th is capped, the January 7th. You have committed for other items. So, I didn't know if 14th was the next available hearing that you would like to hear it on or if you, if the council would like to even go out further with it since it is a residential project. Just leave it up to you and whether or not you want the applicant to renotice and pay those renoticing fees and repost the site for our standards. I'll stand for any questions.
Do you think that because this would be reheard or heard in January, it should be renoticed?
Oh, for sure.
So, counsel, what date are you?
What do you think, Genesis?
14th.
Mr. Borden.
I think even a week later, perhaps.
Is your?
It is. It is, yeah. A week later. Gives people a better opportunity to participate and become informed after the holidays.
So, on the 21st?
21st. Great, Genesis.
I like that date.
And, you know, that renoticing at the applicant's expense?
Yes.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion to?
Madam Mayor.
I guess, do we need to continue this?
Yeah.
If it's not even open? Oh, yeah, because it was published. Yes, Mr. Borden.
Madam Mayor, I move we continue item 8B to January 21st to be renoticed and posted at the applicant's expense.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to continue item 8B with the appropriate renoticing at the applicant's expense. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay. Item 8C is a public hearing for H. 2019-0097. I will open this public hearing. Is there anyone new here this evening that has not participated in a public hearing process? Okay. Well, then, young man, I will explain our process for you.
Good for you.
Thank you for raising your hand. During this portion of our agenda, the land use, we do start with opening remarks about the application. And our staff introduces the entire application and goes over their staff report and what has happened to date. Then the applicant has up to 15 minutes to discuss their application and add anything that is pertinent that they want to make sure is highlighted in front of city council. At that point, we have our public comment period. The public is invited to comment up to three minutes. And once that public comment concludes, we then ask the applicant to wrap up and answer any questions that might have come up during the public testimony. The council has the opportunity to ask any questions to staff, applicant, or those that testify. And to keep in mind that we do have a public record already for each of these items that council has had an opportunity to review, as well as review the planning and zoning meeting minutes. So, there's a lot of information that this council's briefed on in their review process before this. So, with that, I'm going to turn this over to Bill.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Next item on the agenda this evening is the Percy subdivision. The property is currently zoned R4 within the city. The applicant is here tonight to discuss DA modification, de-annexation of a piece of property, rezone of the property, and primary plating of this particular property as well. The site consists of 28.51 acres of land. It's located on the east side of South Meridian Road and south of Amity Road as well. So, this property was annexed in 2015 with the South Meridian Annexation that came before you. The R4 zoning was a placeholder zone for the applicant. As part of the development agreement that concurrently controls the site, the applicant was afforded a free DA modification along with a free rezone application to coincide with a future development plan. And that's why we're here this evening. You can see here on the property, on the future land use map that's in the middle of the screen before you, the property has split land use on it. So, a portion of it is medium-density residential. And the primary acreage is low-density residential. And looking at the density that the applicant's proposing this evening, we're talking 3.96 dwelling units to the acre, which is a little bit higher on the low end, but on the low end of the medium-density residential. So, in this particular case, in looking at what was allowed through the development agreement and looking at that this particular property does have split land use on it, we felt confident in our recommendation to you this evening that the applicant did not need to request a step up in density because of the low end of the density that's proposed to you this evening. And you can see on the aerial that the applicant, or this particular property is current vacant property being used for agricultural uses. So, as I mentioned to you, the applicant, we haven't seen this before. So, this is first for Meridian, where the applicant is actually proposing to de-annex a portion of their property. And the main reason for the de-annexation is the applicant has worked with this particular, the property owners to the south and secured a 50-foot wide permanent easement for the construction of the public street that's going to connect into Meridian Road at the half-mile location, which is consistent with both city code and ITD's policies. In order for that to happen, the owner that was dedicating a 25-foot easement wanted to be made whole. So, the applicant is de-annexing the 0.42 acres of land in exchange for that easement that's already been granted to the applicant. Staff had a chance to reach out to Ada County Development Services to see what the process would be in order to de-annex the property. And the applicant would have to rezone in the county and then do a property boundary adjustment and through the county, once the de-annexation is complete. So, the applicant's already pre-app with the county. The county's already transmitted the application to the city for comment. I was happy to inform the county that planning is supportive of the de-annexation request and the rezone and property boundary adjustment application through their process. And it was consistent with what we would be sharing with you this evening. So, the applicant's already started that work with the county at this point. So, you can see here, the rezone for, the rezone boundary of the property consists of 30.02 acres of land. And again, rezoning from the R4 to the R8 zoning district. The DA modification is proposed, again, to essentially supersede the previous development agreement in order for him to move forward with the development plan that's before you this evening. The plat itself is, does consist of 113 single-family lots and 11 common lots at a gross density of 3.96 dwellings to the acre, again, consistent with the comprehensive plan designation. The applicant intends on developing the site in two phases. The southeast portion will be the first phase, and that would be 53 lots and include all the frontage improvements along Meridian Road. The second phase would be the northwest portion here, and that would be the last, the remaining 60 lots at this point. If you look at the colored graphic here on the left-hand side, if you can see my cursor at the bottom of the screen, this is the location of that collector's street that needs to be constructed at the half-mile. So, you can see there's quite a bit of off-site improvement that the applicant's going to have to do with this particular project moving forward. Access to this site will be from South Meridian Road. If you had a chance to look at the staff report, you can see that Police Department, both planning staff and the Police Department, did recommend three-quarter movement for that access to Meridian Road. I don't know if the council is aware, but ITD is actually doing a corridor study along Meridian Road. And at some point, they envision a signal being here when it's warranted. So, at this point, it will be restricted until such time as ITD completes that corridor study and warrants whether or not a signal can go in at the half-mile location and allow for full movements at that intersection. The applicant, or the applicant's also proposing a broad mix of residential lot sizes as well as part of the development. So, there is some housing diversity here, although they're all front-loaded housing products. You can see minimum lot size is 5,250 square feet, all the way up to 7,300 on average. We thought this was important to show the council, given the fact that the comprehensive plan is supportive of more diversity in our residential neighborhoods moving forward. The applicant is required to provide a minimum of 10% open space and two amenities per UDC standards. The plat before you this evening depicts 12.84% open space, which is approximately 3.66 acres of land. Here's the open space exhibit on your left-hand side. And then, along Meridian Road, because it is a state highway, the applicant will have to provide a 35-foot wide landscape buffer with sound attenuation and a concrete wall to mitigate the noise to the residences. And then, as part of the amenity package, the applicant has the 10-foot multi-use pathway along Meridian Road, a central open space with a tot lot. And then, if you notice, as you enter into the development off of that collector's street here, the applicant has a large open space lot with a sitting area, gazebo area, for passive open space for residents to use. As, there's also going to be a water feature or pond on that entry feature so residents can use as well. And the applicant will have to comply with UDC standards as far as aerating it, making sure that it's not a mosquito breeding ground, breeding ground per UDC standards. And that's conditioned in the staff report. The applicant also provided residential building elevations for you this evening. You can see here the mixture of homes that are proposed. Staff is recommending that any homes up against the state highway provide changes in modulation and building materials and provide vertical relief to the rear of those homes that back up to the state highway, which is pretty standard condition that we've been requiring from the development community. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval at their meeting on November 7th, testifying in favor. We had? testifying in favor, we had Matt Schultz. We had Carl Reederman, who testified, commented on the application, and then also received written testimony from Matt Schultz in agreement with most of the conditions in the staff report. If you had a chance to look at the commission remarks, you can see that during the Planning and Zoning Commission and prior to the City Council hearing, the applicant was able to address a lot of staff's conditions of approval and comments in the staff report. And that's why staff went through the staff report, made some changes, updated it with the revised plans, and changed conditions to coincide with the revised plans that's being shown to you this evening. Really, the only key item of public testimony, that was Mr. Reederman. He was just inquiring about whether or not sewer and water stubs were being provided to his northern property, which is currently C2 in the county. So this, where the applicant's stubbing the street, there is a C2 zoning up against that. But the city currently has that as medium-density on their comprehensive plan. So if that ever comes in and annexes into the city, we would envision more of a residential use than a commercial use that's currently designated in the county. Key issue of discussion by the commission, or commission had asked what the minimum number of amenities were. The applicant's providing one above the code requirement, so there are three amenities. And open space, again, is at 12%, which is in excess of UDC standards. The commission also had asked the applicant if, whether or not they could reorient some of the open space in the northwest corner to a more central location within the development. And given the topography concerns of the site, it wasn't feasible. And given the fact that they only have one access point from Meridian Road into this site, they have to provide an emergency access out to Meridian Road in this location as well. And so rather than, they weren't able to relocate more open space here without losing additional lots. I would mention to the council that this area has increased from the previous middle based on staff's recommendation and the applicant working with staff on those changes. So we believe that the open space is adequate for this proposed development. One item of discussion at the commission hearing was also the extension of the sidewalk along the northern off-site portion of the collector roadway. And the reason why that came up was staff had concerns about how the school district was going to pick up the children for the school site. We weren't sure if they were going to drive into the development and pick them up internal to the site, or if they were going to stop on Meridian Road and pick them up at this intersection. So we wanted to make sure we had a safe routes to school for the kids with this particular development because of the amount of off-site improvements. I would let you know that as part of your packet, the applicant did reach out to Joe Yocum, the school district superintendent, or vice superintendent. And he thought that this micropath location located here along the south boundary of the site was adequate to provide a student pickup area, provided there's adequate lighting there for the students to wait for the bus location, at the bus location. And then also, when this plat originally got submitted, the applicant did have two stub streets to the Brighton property, to the east. In discussions with the applicant and Brighton, they have worked out an agreement for one stub location. And now, in this particular plat here, the applicant's actually lost one of the stub streets and added two common driveways. And that's been addressed in the staff report and conditions updated accordingly, based on those discussions. One item, so really, the commission struck site-specific conditions of approval 2A and 3A, which really had to do with the open space and consolidating that to a more central location, which he has done. And then, we also gave the applicant, in the DA, we've restricted the applicant's turning movements onto Meridian Road. But we understanding that ITD is doing that corridor study, and we wanted to make it flexible that at some point in the future, if there is a signalized intersection at the half-mile as anticipated, that that would no longer be in play, that they would be allowed to have a full movement at the intersection and not the right-in, right-out, left-in only, as it's currently stated in the staff report. And so really, the only outstanding issue for council this evening is the block length. In the staff report, there was, under the UDC, the council has the ability to grant a longer block length. And so this particular block face is over 750 feet due to abutting a state highway. So the code gives you flexibility to grant a longer block length. Staff's recommendation, and both staff and ACHD recommendation, was to include traffic calming if that was your, if you were inclined to approve that this evening, as recommended by the commission and staff. So as the plat's showing before you this evening, both the commission and staff do support the extended block length with the inclusion of the traffic calming as depicted before you this evening. Staff has not received any additional written testimony on this application since the Planning and Zoning Commission. So really, no conditions of approval to modify this evening. It's a fairly clean application. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions at this time?
Madam Mayor, one question.
Mr. Burton.
Did West Ada really approve a bus stop on a state highway?
Do it right now.
Really?
Madam Chair, yeah, members of the commission, yeah, they're stopping on the, on Meridian Road now and picking kids up at those intersections all along there. It's pretty common practice.
Okay.
Can we still say that's just crazy? That's crazy.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
I agree. It's something that I know we've got a meeting coming with the school district. But there's got to be a better approach. And, you know, every one of those neighborhoods along Meridian Road that have the young kids waiting to hop on the bus, have access and entrances into those neighborhoods that seem to make a whole lot more sense from a public safety aspect. So I hope that's an item that maybe we could put on our agenda with the school district. They've got to improve that. It's, Meridian Road just is not the appropriate place to be picking up or dropping off little kids.
Oh, that's crazy. Okay. Next, counsel. There you go, Brad.
Nice point, Mayor, nice point.
Okay, would the applicant like to make comment? Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Tammy and counsel. Matt Schultz, 8421, South 10 Mile, Meridian. Thanks for having me. We work on these things for several months, and it's always good to finally get here to the end. And it's been polished up and working with staff, working with ACHD, working with ITD. We think, I think we got it. Kind of start, last thing first, I thought it was crazy as well when staff put the condition in there that we extend the sidewalk out for students. I thought, there's no way that the school district's going to want that, you know? And so I called Joe Yocum, and he said, the older kids, they'll pick up on the highway. I think it's the middle school, high school. With the younger kids, they'll come in and pick them up. That's what he told me. But he said he would agree with this micropath extension. No need to go running all the way down for 1,000 feet. Either way, we fully support you pressing them to pick them up inside. We have no problems with that. That'd be great. That's what I would support. I drive down the Meridian Road all the time and going fast, you know? We go fast down Meridian Road, it's 55 mile an hour zone. So with that said, I'll start over now. I just want to address the last thing first, and then we'll move forward. This is a site that we weren't involved in five years ago when it was annexed. I believe there's 40 different properties, 20 different property owners, 1,500 acres. I can't remember the number, but there was quite a bit of land that the Meridian annexed and provided services to some properties, including this one. This does have sewer going through that northerly east-west street. There's an existing city sewer line there that just happens to land perfectly. They put it in a good spot for that east-west street. And it goes, and it goes across the street to some other annexed properties that's undeveloped right now. So when we looked at it, got approached on it earlier this year by Mr. Percy, we liked it because we love South Meridian, being right on the highway. Gives you a little bit of pause. You know, how are we going to address this? How are we going to get access? Because we don't have mid-mile continuity. And so we had to approach the two southern property owners, and that took a lengthy amount of negotiations to secure mid-mile access. We have those ACHD easements in hand, subject to, at least with Matthias. Gualloza, beautiful best name, can't say it very well. He said, that's great, you're giving me services, you're giving me access, but I want to strip your property back. So that's why we are asking for a de-annexation. We look at it as a housekeeping item. Maybe we annexed just a sliver too much originally. Now we're just tightening that up so this property that got annexed can get access, is where we're at. So there is this joint application, we're running through the county right now to de-annex, or to essentially concur, hopefully, with your recommendation to de-annex and rezone that from Meridian R4 to back to a county RUT. And that owner is not interested in development. He's not interested in doing anything for the near or medium term. It's a long-term deal for him. So when we looked at it, we looked at, you know, Bill says we didn't ask for a step-up. We didn't ask for a step-up. But we did, you know, there are some R8 lots in here. There are some R4 lots in here. Underneath the R8 umbrella with the development agreement that locks in this layout, locks in this lot size, locks in all those things. But we have a variety of lot sizes that are, we like having a mix of R4-sized lots. We've done probably half-R4, half-R8 over the last four years in South Meridian. And so as far as the spread, about 24% of these are over 8,000. 53% are over 7,000. 81% are over 6,000. And there's only 19% under 6, and those are all over 5. So if we really wanted to get down and dirty with an R8, really dig in and go for 4,000 square foot lots, it probably would have been closer to 6 to the acre, five and a half to 6. So we're definitely, like Bill said, I can't remember what exactly he said, but we're on the low end of density for an R8, essentially, at the 4. So sorry about the colors. Those didn't print out very well. I'm about ready to go into seizure here. But the yellows are the bigger ones, obviously. And the pink ones are bigger. They're almost R4s, but not quite. They're, you know, they're the 7,000. So if they were just a little deeper, they'd hit R4, but they have R4 widths. So we want to get a mix and have a lower density because we are cognizant of our neighbors to the south. Not immediate neighbors, but we do have some one-acre lots down to the south. And we see this as transitional, the mid-mile collector being a good dividing line, which is, end up being a 50-foot right-of-way with 25-foot landscape buffers on the other side that will continue all the way over to Locust Grove, you know? And Brighton is half of that. So I just want to say, we did exceed, we did increase the landscape buffer on Meridian Road. Your requirement's 35? We're actually at 45. We're doing 10 feet in there just to make sure people know they're not in Kuna anymore. And we're getting, you know, we doubled up the required street trees on there. We really, Bill prodded me a little bit because I was like, oh yeah, look at that. The net code, but we don't want to meet code. We want to exceed code. So we went in, and we have almost doubled out of trees, added like 500 bushes and shrubs, and added extra 10 feet of width beyond what your requirement is, just so everybody knows. We just thought that was important to do, to make sure. And we did agree to do that in the first phase. And the requirement is to get at least a 10-foot combination of a berm and a fence wall above the center line. So our site drops off. So we're going to do a significant amount of dirt work to get that up to a standard borrowed ditch and sidewalk and a wall that, right now, that wall, if we didn't bring in 20,000 yards of dirt, we'd be down, 15 feet down at the bottom of that field. But it's all going to be up. So it'll look like a typical barrier, and it'll be good. It'll look good. But we're going to do some significant raising as that road goes up the hill there. So Bill, as usual, did a very thorough job of covering all the little tweaks and issues that we came up with, with our neighbors being Brighton. They contacted me the day after we submitted and said, hey, we'd like to work together on stub streets. I said, okay, hopefully it doesn't screw me up, you know, with, you know, timing. And we're able to make the revisions at the appropriate time. So very inconsequential, same number of lots, same size of lots. We just did something that worked better for them. And we want to be a good neighbor in that regard. It always pays to get on with Brighton. It's just always better that way, so. So with that said, we do concur with staff report, with staff's recommendations, P and Z's recommendations, ITD, and ACHD. So ITD, as everybody knows, we met with them. They said, hey, we're not going to hold you up. We're not going to hold you up on this corridor study. We'll allow you to have a left, a left-in coming from Meridian. And if you're coming out, you can go, you can go out to Meridian Right, and you can go in right from Kuna, but you can't go left out to Kuna in cross-traffic. We said, that's okay on this side of the road. We'll take that. You know, we'd rather go to Meridian. So we have to put a little median out there to compel that to happen, to make sure people don't cross. So we have to do that. And they also, there was a big subdivision of the Eagle, the Thousand Lauder, that I think just recently got shot down. But this is before it got shot down. It triggered a bunch of improvements. And the developer didn't like what ITD came up with for recommendations, so they called the governor. This came from ITD, I heard this from the district engineer. And so we're going to try a new policy. Everybody pays their proportionate share on these, on some, you know, major signals. Are you game? Like, whatever you say, you're the state. So they said, we contribute 2.5%, I think roughly, of the Amity, Meridian Road intersection. That's our traffic generation. That build out is 2.5% per our traffic study. And so therefore, we're going to ask for 2.5% of the cost of expanding that intersection someday. Okay, cross our fingers on what you think that is. Well, they came up with like $1.1 million. And so 2.5%, you do the math, you're like, oh, it's about $35,000. And we said, okay, whatever it takes. We just asked if that is the policy moving forward, that, you know, everybody is... The only thing that triggers that is you hit 100 lots, you have to do a traffic study, which means you do this analysis. So if you're under 100, you don't even trigger the analysis. And if you're just off the highway, you may not trigger it. So we just hope it's fairly enforced among everybody moving forward. But we did agree to that. I don't know how they're going to enforce it moving forward, but we've run the record with ACHD and ITD that we do concur with that recommendation to do our part to the traffic along there. So we think we've got a good subdivision. We think it blends in. And on your new comp plan, I know you guys haven't adopted it yet, so please don't rescind this, but it is all medium here on the new one that last I saw, just for the, you know, the way we looked at. So I think it's, not that you need that to make the decision, that it's okay to do the R8. Like Bill said, there's a mix here. Just some information for thought. So with that, we'll stand for any questions. I'm not sure if we have anybody here to speak, but I'm here to answer any questions and reserve some time if there is anybody that wants to speak, so.
Thank you, Matt. Counsel, any questions? Thank you. We'll open our public comment. Mr. Clerk, any sign-ups?
Madam Mayor, there's only one sign-up, but she indicated she did not wish to testify.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this application? Okay. So counsel, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I have some questions for Mr. Schultz. Get back up here.
Yes, Matt Schultz, here again.
Mr. Schultz, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. After looking over this application in our packet, the only concern that I had is the... And I understand that you have enough open space and you're beyond the open space. I know that the staff has said that your open space is adequate. Since there isn't like a public park nearby where the kiddos can go hang, you know, and have fun, is there any way that you could give us just a little bit more open space in this, in this project somewhere somehow? Usable open space, like?
I hate to say no. There, the places to gain it in a meaningful area would be in the central block right here. And it would be to narrow those lots up, make them smaller. So there's trade-offs. Make those lots smaller to gain some open space. Or make these bigger lots smaller too, right here. Those are the natural areas to put it. Anywhere else, it's, you're putting a square peg in a round hole. It's just not the right spot to put it. This area right here is actually ramped. There's actually a nice little sled hill in the future here, probably about 12 feet, 13 feet high.
That part is a lot higher than...
The road right here, where my cursor is, is probably about, I think, 12, 13 feet higher than the ground here. And that'll be a ramp, you know, meet and fire slopes and all that, so they can get down in there. So, and then the city sewer line actually runs right through here, right down that road. I can't do it very straight, but it runs right down, right through that open space, and that ramp comes up here. So there is a very large, substantial, very nice city park, about a mile, mile and a quarter away. Discovery Park, that I was involved with way back when, when that thing was first acquired. So I know we do have a substantial regional park close by. When this section does develop, there will be internal connectivity over to Locust Grove and up to Lake Hazel. will, will be internal connectivity over the Locust Grove and up to Lake Hazel. And, and a regional pathway is just, just on this next property to our east. There'll be a regional pathway down the Williams Pipeline easement that actually goes to the city park as well. So, it'll be, there'll be pedestrian connectivity to that as well as vehicular connectivity over to that. But we're a pretty small site. So, I mean, if you're asking for an extra five, six thousand square feet, no problem. You're asking for another couple acres and it's like, "Oh my gosh, there goes a million dollars for something that's not programmed or not been talked about before." So, that's all.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavan.
Matt, first off, nice soup.
Oh, thank you.
Very, very fashioned for it.
I, I had to keep up with, um, with Bill.
That's right. I appreciate it. Uh, the pond that's there on the, was it the southeast corner? What, what percentage of that open space is that pond? And again, you're the expert, but I, I tend to agree a little bit with Councilman Burnt in that you've got some really cool diversity of open space, but not a lot that I would consider attractive spots for kids to go play and use. And so, that, that pond is always, kind of, I identified as if that could be smaller, that might be, also create some area of opportunity to give the kids a little bit more open area to play. So, help me understand the percentage of the pond versus that area.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman Cavan. Thanks for pointing that out. When we first drew that in there, we drew in there as a placeholder size, hey, here's a pond. We know we need it for irrigation. It'll have a fountain in it to keep the, keep it aerated, keep mosquitoes out. Uh, Bill did point out that we're, we're, it's gonna shrink. I think your code says twenty-five percent of, of maximum of the open area, which I wasn't aware of. But, um, that is gonna shrink to be twenty-five percent. So, does that cut in half? Is that cutting a third, you know, two-thirds? It will shrink and it will increase.
And, Madam Mayor, just one follow-up. Sorry, Matt. Um, on these, uh, maps, you've got that kind of central open space with, uh, with the tot lot. Back, back, and I think on the other image you gave us, it showed the, depicted this, this square footage size of each lot.
Mm-hmm.
I think it showed them
Right here.
top and bottom. So, I assume this is kind of how, how you're proposing it to be, not in the other image that you showed us?
What you see here, where, with the phasing plan, it does have the updated square foots of lots and open space.
Madam Mayor, sorry, Matt, can then, can you change to, you had another image in your, there we go.
So, so when, when we submitted this originally, this is what we submitted. And I haven't updated this for the new layout.
Okay.
You know, on the phasing plan that you saw. So, we did open this up. This was two-sided, now three-sided. And we did increase it about ten percent.
Okay.
So, we did make it better by opening it up on three sides and we did, uh, increase it. So, that we, we did revise during the process.
Madam Mayor, one more. I'm sorry. And this question for, for fire. Though when I hear thirteen-foot slope and that's also emergency access, that, that surprises me. Is, is that something you guys are okay with? And have you had any communication with the applicant about...
When Matt brought this forward, uh, quite a while ago, we did talk about how are we gonna get access through there? Because he's gonna be obviously limited to thirty lots, um, because he's only got one way in and one way out at this point. So, um, if he wants to go past thirty, yeah, we definitely have to get that corner, northwest corner figured out to get a road out to that area. And, and we had talked about how they were gonna do that at the meeting. That was a long time ago. I don't remember exactly what we discussed, but we did talk about it.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Cavan, it's about two-hundred-and-fifty feet. And it's about a thirteen-foot rise. That calculates out to about a five percent, five percent slope. And ten percent, I believe, is max. So, we have plenty of, we have ample slope to play with there. We've done steeper.
Okay.
We've done steeper.
So, it's a sliding hill for kids and toboggan for the fire departments.
Yes.
So, if it's on fire, don't sled if the houses are on fire. And you can't get in down here.
All right.
Any, any other questions from counsel? Thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel, any further information?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavan.
I don't need, unless counsel, anything else, I'm happy to... I think a motion to be closed the public hearing on H dash two zero one nine dash zero zero nine seven.
Second.
A motion is second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Mayor, Mayor Counsel, sorry to interrupt this bill over here. Just, uh, clarification this evening. So, right now, you heard that applicant testify this evening about paying their proportionate share for the intersection improvements. That's not contemplated in the staff report because ITD didn't give us those conditions of approval. So, if that's something that you wish to participate and be the hammer for ITD, then I would suggest you have a provision, as testified by the applicant, that they pay their proportionate share and include that as a DA provision, um, as you deliberate this evening. Just putting it out there.
So, we didn't get anything in writing from ITD on regarding that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we did not because the conditions came in. There's, the application was, those discussions happened after our staff report and all of those. So, we had comments beheaded before we got that. That was new news to me this evening as well. So, that's not captured in, in the staff report by any means. It's the first time that I've actually heard of them kinda taking that position too and changing policies. And I know I've heard from other planners in other jurisdictions that ITD was requiring some, some serious off-site improvements for developers these days and they're, they're treading on a slippery slope. Uh, but certainly, it looks like the applicant said on record that he's, they're amenable to paying their thirty-five thousand dollars. But if that's something that you want to endorse and support moving forward, then those are things that we would have to capture in, in a development agreement. So, just...
Sounds pretty arbitrary to me. I, I mean...
I'll, I'll turn it over to the mayor if he had any...
I'm all for people paying for their impact. But to arbitrarily make it up without anything in writing seems a little bit strange.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavan.
I agree. And so, I guess I'm, I'm gonna look for some direction from staff and/or the council if we can. And should this council want to approve it? If we, when we receive a letter, do we want to continue it for a week to allow communication from A, from ITD? Or is this body comfortable moving forward?
Yes.
Regardless.
Regardless.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Since the only information we have on this is from the applicant himself.
Yeah, and what a nice guy to bring up. I will pay in addition to like thirty-five thousand is...
By trying to be honest and upfront with us, like have this
Public hearing, though.
kick down the road.
We've closed the public hearing.
Did we close it? Did, but Madam Mayor, I move we reopen the public hearing for the debate.
Second.
I have a motion is second to reopen the public hearing to hear from the applicant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Schultz.
I'm sorry. Shouldn't have said anything. No.
Yeah, I know.
It, it is captured.
First, say your name.
Matt Schultz, eight four two one. Thank you. Uh, that, that recommendation has been captured in the ACHD staff report. Maybe just didn't dig deep enough, but it's there. This was, worked out over the summer. We got a staff report. We had to get a lot worked out before we could even submit to you guys. Um, trust me, I know it took us two months to get ACHD to approve our traffic study, which required ITD concurrence before we could even submit. And so, it's in there. It's, there was a memorandum from ITD to submit. I don't know if ACHD didn't attach it or didn't get delivered, but, uh, or it got lost somewhere. But it's, it's, it's written. It's there. That's why I'm just kinda communicating that and reinforcing what's already been there. So...
So, you're more of a good guy or less of a good guy than we gave you credit?
I don't know. I don't know. No comment.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
If he had got up and told us that, uh, in a conversation with the school district, they had asked him to put up a bouncy house once a year, um, for a party and he had agreed to it and there was something in writing about it. No way on earth we're gonna include it in our requirements that, holy crap, you'd better put that thing, you'd better do that than adhere to that.
Yes, we would, because we really wanna enforce that.
Right, right, right. That's all. It is there. It, it has been written in staff report. It's fully documented by ITD. It is.
Nice example.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bourne.
Real quick, Matt, while you're up here, remind me, does your, um, including the, the improvements along Meridian Road within Phase One, is that our requirement? Or...
It is. It, it was asked for by staff and P&amp;Z and we agreed.
So...
And we changed our phasing plan.
And the reason I ask is I think, I appreciate that a lot. I think that's really important, whether it's required or encouraged. Those are, that's an example of something that you generally don't seem to contest and you appreciate the importance of it, which hats off to you. And the other thing while you're there is the, the way you've dispersed lot sizes, which you've referenced earlier, especially on the east side. I think that's fantastic and it's gonna make this region develop really well. So, greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, to be honest with you, we didn't think enough about that frontage, but when it was pointed out to us, we agreed with it for our own sake, for our own sales, for our own first-phase homes. That needed to be in. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Sorry. I don't have a question. It's not a question. It's a comment. And it's not something that I would put in a requirement. But a gazebo just by itself doesn't get used. I walk, I go for lots to walk. I walk by them all the time. So, something, a barbecue, something, this is your project. So, I guess that I wouldn't put this in, in any requirements, but you want this to be a nice subdivision and you want it to be attractive to people.
Barbecue?
I'm just saying, think about it. It's your project, but I just don't see them getting used if they're just a gazebo.
Thank you for the, for the advice. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
One, since we opened up the public hearing, instead of like adding, um, you know, more square footage to the, um, open space, what if, what if you were to take the, the, the open space that is up in the upper east side, right-hand side, that little sliver, the little two lots, and just swap it out for two lots down here and put houses up there and make that open space in the middle bigger? Then it's almost like trading square footage, but it seems like that open space is more usable and bigger. Would that be an option?
Mayor and Councilmember, it would, potentially. There's always an underground reason, right?
Uh-huh, besides, yes.
And there's, there's a fairly large seepage bed in that area that we're not, and it's not a pond, it's not a depression, it's out of sight, out of mind, and you can play on it and throw your frisbee on it and walk your dog on it. But there was, that's a big drainage facility right there.
Okay.
That's, that's the only reason.
Got it.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we reclose the public hearing on I, N, A, C.
Second.
I have a motion is second to reclose the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve H two thousand nineteen zero zero nine seven and include the, um, uh, waiver of the, like, block length requirement, uh, to allow what's been proposed. Second. Cover everything?
I have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion? I imagine the ITD thing, if it's in ACHD's report, or if it's somewhere, it will be captured. Mr. Clerk, we will roll.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
And Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavan.
Aye.
Councilmember Bourne.
Aye.
All ayes, most caring.
Good project.
Any items under future meeting topics? Mr. Cavan.
Madam Mayor, just, I just, I wanna close the loop on this for counsel's benefit. I attended yesterday the Ada County Emergency Management Meeting.
That's right.
Uh, and just wanted to give counsel an update, uh, on what that meeting, uh, what the results were. The only thing that is kind of, should be on everyone's radar is that this group approved the purchase of a device that allows to test for, um, substances, either explosives or other harmful materials. It's a sixty-thousand-dollar device that's shared throughout the jurisdictions. Um, I'm happy to send a spec sheet, uh, to everyone if there's any interest on that. But the big thing to come away from that, I thought, is, is benefit for our group moving forward is, and when I got elected, I didn't know who this group was until maybe I'd been on the council for two or maybe three years. Um, and so, they are really engaged in their, um, onboarding of both, uh, new and existing mayors and councils. It sounds like they've already met with Marylex Simison. I would like the opportunity to engage both with our newly-elected city councils, maybe as well as the body as a whole in January or February. So, just to have that be on everyone's radar. If you anyone have other questions about, you know, the meeting is fairly short. I'm happy to connect with you all offline.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to close the council meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
I move we adjourn.
I have a motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.